...with liberty and justice.
I'm here. Obidorf.
There.
Echol. Marquette. Heben.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Move to excuse Councilman Ruse.
Let the record show Mrs. Echol is here.
All those in favor of excusing.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Twenty-two regular council meeting.
So, second. All those in favor of approving the minute? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Epstein.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Twenty-two regular council meeting.
So, second. All those in favor? Twelve, December the 12th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's been about four years since we engaged with. We've gone through COVID, we've gone through some big economic development changes and. Challenges. I'm excited that this is coming to a conclusion. I think they. Of identifying the renaissance that we are going through right now. And I also. Because what's not in the report is they were a constant in my life for the. Development that has come to our great city. I think they've done a fantastic job very. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mick from O'Brien and Scott from Gateway.
Well, Mayor, thank you for, and Council, and. Thank you for giving us the time to share this with you today. It has been. Taking longer than we anticipated when we started. But Scott. Is here today. Paul. Paul with Pogomire. Part of our team also. O'Brien is an architectural firm, for those of you. We have a long history of doing master plans and vision. Most of our work is for private development, although some of our work is for municipal. Scott with Gateway Planning is a planning firm also based in Dallas. About half of his work is with municipalities and about half of it was with, is with private developers. Us have done a lot of this kind of stuff over the past years and we have worked, both of us have worked together. Paul with Pogomire is our local representative. Is with a well-respected civil engineering firm in the area, but their company has also. Rosford, so we were really fortunate to have them as part of our team. See. When we. I guess I'm going to go back in time just a little bit. In today, if you were to go. A retail establishment called Nebraska Furniture Mart. It's a five. Home furnishings, furniture and home furnishings store attached to a 1.3. Attribution Center. In addition to that, on the same, within the same development. Square foot sporting goods store. Hotel. High-rise. Another 500,000 square feet of retail development that includes entertainment. In 19, I think it was. Nineteen, but 2017, our company, 2016, our company got a call. Who is the owner of this particular development that I just mentioned? Master planner and create a vision book similar to this for that project. I think in, I think it was back in 2000, early 2018, I got a call. Probably only the second time in my career that I had a mayor of a city call me direct. Rest. But he had seen the work, the product that we had done for. Furniture Mart. And said that, told me that something like that was needed for Rossford. Proceeded to kind of go through the different areas in Rossford, including the crossroads, the. The Marina District, the Entertainment District and the Buck Road District and said, we need. Together. And not knowing that much about Rossford or the area at the time. With Rossford. I said, it sounds like a really wonderful opportunity. Had to make a trip up to Indiana and I called your mayor and I said, I'm going to be in Indiana over the. We all just come on over to Rossford on Monday morning, we'll meet, you can kind of show me around. And so that's what we did. I left and came back and I'm going, boy, this is. Said, I'm not quite sure how we're going to pull this off, so that's when I called Scott and I. Opportunity that we have and I really need somebody like you to partner up with me and help us out with that. That's how the, that's how this all kind of got started. It was, I think, late in 2018 when. To an agreement on a contract and we were able to get started. Go ahead and flip. So, I think one question that I. I want to discuss for just a minute is what is a master plan or a vision book, if you will? We've done many. Most of them, like I said, have been for private developers. Them are different. They're all unique to the opportunity, whether it's. None of them are the same, but there are some things about them that are, that are. And all of them address basically three issues. They are shown. Assets do you have available to work with and to leverage? And create a vision for the future. And then what's the price? One thing that Scott and I, our companies have in common is. If you can't execute, then it's really not worth the time and the money, the money that. So it's very important for us that whatever we produce. There's. The first thing that we did when we started this project is. Visit to Rossford. Sort of got the lay of the land. Understood what it was, the city's vision for it, for the, you know, for the city. Think about how we would tie all these things together. We did some surveying, we did some interviewing. Some of the prominent landowners. We sent out some public surveys that had a really good response. One of the things that we heard from staff is we need jobs. One of the things that we heard from the citizens was we need more quality of life. We'd like some more restaurants, we'd like some shopping that we don't have to go to Perry's Burger, Toledo for. Maybe some better parks and things for our kids to do. In. Under them for you guys in that to provide those things for the, for the. And. But you need the jobs to get the funds. In a sense, they were sort of competing interests, if you will. So we saw it as our. A pathway for you to get both. The. We got started down the process. Maybe. We felt like we were making some good progress. There and. At the time it was called Project Freddy. Turned out to be. They were the kind of tenants that we were putting this together to try to recruit. There and whoever else in the city was instrumental in getting them here, but it caused us to go on hold for a little. Itself. And then we kind of got started again and then COVID hit, kind of. So there was a lot of, you know, places where we had to stop and start a little bit and that's part of the. The process took a little bit longer, but. A lot of. Our vision books. Are prescriptive in the sense that. Plan that shows you what we think should go here or there and what it should look like. That works pretty well a lot of times for private developers because they have control over. The ability or they have some ability to manage the tenants or whoever. Doesn't work so well for a city and in your case. That was not necessarily the right. Working with landowners, private landowners who have owned their land and, and. What we want to do is create a process by which. City wins, but the landowners win. So a prescriptive process was not going to be. Solution for that, so what we've created is what we call a fluid. That capitalizes on the resources that you guys have available. Such a way that you can get funding that's available so that you can. Provide to the citizens some of the things that they want. It's. Pro Shops was here. And Pilkington or NSG was here. Obviously has come in and now Scannell has come in. The. After that sort of, the table was set with them. To them a little more deeply and found out that there's. All together. And that's what Scott's going to spend a little bit of time talking about. But it's that. Ultimately. Will help you guys get the funding that you need to do the things. People here and then ultimately provide the amenities that your citizens are looking for.
Paul just showed up while I was talking, so. So it's good to see many of you and Council.
Thank you.
And I say that because this is not a school board, I'm not sure it's a good thing to get elected to a school board. I think that's. Mayors appreciate the opportunity to continue and. We'll show a little 30-year-old diagram from Pogomire in a sec. Paul and their team. And I really, I must say, I think it's important to. I'm a lawyer in my first life, so.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you, Council. I think it's really important to stress that, you know, we just met. Saw the old chief, Toby, several of y'all. Time because we have been working collaboratively back and forth on the plan that. As we, from the very beginning when they were hired and. Score that what you're seeing in the document is not, we're not starting. The essence of this effort has been underway for some time and of course, Amazon. Really changed the trajectory and so I, it became our charge. Help figure out how to leverage. When I came back from DC when I was practicing. Many years ago and I served for two years as the state of Texas, believe it or not, in the 90s as the appointed director. Program for the state and natural gas and Boone Pickens and we had the first heavy. International conference with EVs. And. We talked to Pilkington and Nippon Sheet Glass and. The history, we understood the history of Mr. Ford, finding the. The farm on the south side of the mommy and naming it him and his wife and. Real company town. We didn't understand the evolution and we started digging in to really understand because. Pilkington, why don't you guys just move and we'll, you know, we'll do park and maybe some mixed use and. They kind of went, okay. And because remember, we were over. We were going to ask them for some of that land for a little bit of a green space addition. The reason I think this is important. COVID changed the entire reality, right? It accelerated Amazon, Amazon almost doubled. Really globally, it changed the whole notion of what is retail and what's going to be successful. And so. Your team and then doing research. And the evolution of going, of the. One's venture with Mr. Ford and then, and then. And the venerable glass company from England. And then they, in inventing the flat glass process. Going to them to license it and then, and literally them just falling in love with each other's companies, I mean. That's the signing ceremony of Nippon Sheet Glass and Pilkington in the early 60s on the licensing. P glass NSG, they accelerated in such a good job of their first flat glass factory in Japan. Nippon Sheet Glass bought out completely Pilkington, but, but. And glass outside of the United States and, and then digging. NSG Pilkington is one of the top glass manufacturers in the world for photovoltaics and of course, you're the center of clean. For solar being one of their, being in North and South America, one of the most significant. Powered company, solar energy companies in this hemisphere and growing. So, and then we started doing research, I had no idea that Johnny. The last time the Audubon Society gave a medal to the top conservationists in the United States. It's amazing and we realize he's now into farm-to-table conservation, all of a sudden we're thinking. Here, of course, Canal is the largest build-to-suit logistics developer with Amazon doing. The largest company in the world in terms of utilization of clean energy, the threads. Of North America and the reinvention of the auto industry, clean energy manufacturing. Next slide. And so we realized that. Some traditional prescriptive master planning. We worked with Paul and his team and. And came up with a citywide and with tentacles to the region of. Function for. Each other is, I think, a testament to the leadership of a community. People. And linking to me, but we all, and I understand. Asked about you all and wanted to know what was important and why you ran. And, you know, this notion that economic development. Community and social responsibility are mutually exclusive. You have the opportunity to be. You said this, the model for the country on this being a company town where you can link those two together. And. In helping the Great Lakes watershed and the. The Black Swamp, not the Black Marsh, we call them marshes down in Texas. And so, and I underscore that point because in the document are some very important specifics. That are critical and, but we link them to the larger story that's unfolding. And so, I bring that picture back because. But I realized as far as the glass factory, the facility in downtown, no, you know. Pilkington to stay here and continue to evolve. And the. Been selling to the auto industry since 1898 continuously, right? Almost 125. You're one of. For solar production for utility energy, left-hand, right-hand. In the auto industry, it's in racing. And somebody mentioned something about, I don't, we were doing something. Love racing, I love cars, love, love GT, not. I had no idea about Formula E and we started talking, next slide, please. Okay. It's bodacious, but. Why not work with NSG? A 1.2 mile. Just shy of 1.7 kilometer track. Stuff and what if we said to NSG, look. Permanent, fully electric vehicle motorsports race course in the world. It's a road. Chief, you're talking, you know, it's a road course in their facility. It's an opportunity for them to do autoglass that's solar. It connects their solar utility platform and their history of selling to the autos. He's already here, First Solar's here, Amazon's the largest consumer of renewable energy in the world now. And make this a test track, not only for solar, because Porsche's now, everybody's got these. And I did some digging in NSG's midterm planning for their global operations and they really want. But I don't think, we're not, maybe they've been thinking about this, but maybe not, but this is a way to evolve. To be a test track for solar autoglass and then where the world's really. Tesla. The induction. Not the Tesla company, but they're looking at that, but the original. Because really the future is. The future is, could be solar glass, braking energy, which Porsche's working on. Charging back and forth so the car becomes part of the grid, right? You have a microgrid here, which you're working on. Five corridor with the trucking industry. And this becomes a test track. And happens in the auto industry and it's, so it's a fun, cool thing, you can have a Formula E race here every. Start and they're going to have it Ferrari and Nissan and Porsche, they're all developing their EV GT cars. You. It becomes the first time you marry the two together through EV. And you have left-hand, right-hand of NSG. And it can become a. It's endless, right? And retail and events and you can see. The fuchsia color that runs through it, it's, you've got it in your book, but there's a way like. The Padres in downtown San Diego have been there, they've got quarters where they can close off, so there's ways to keep this safe. But also instead of having second homes in the mountains for the people with lots of money, what about the second home? Ferrari. Maybe EV, training on your EV squad car someday. This becomes an international destination, it's also cool for the locals, right? It builds on what. Right-hand together, it's economic development, next slide, please. And it's an opportunity to work with the casino to. There's, Mayor, you said there's not a better time to work with Perrysburg and Toledo in joint ventures on tax base. And you have, it helps the casino and then on the. You could have a farm-to-table restaurant. That is the Finley Farms Restaurant. Johnny Morris, who owns Bass Pro, right there. Right? It's. Leavable, so, and he restored over the.
On the Finley River, this bridge and then opened up this, this near Branson, Missouri. And he now is doing farm-to-table family farms and training people for high yield. That's what the owner of Bass Pro, Cabels, is doing. And so then you. And have this world-class destination, connect it down through. The trails that were originally the bike. Next slide, please. There's the 30-year-old. On the right-hand side. And that was the beginning of the annexation strategy. Bass Pro, the innovation center now at the North Canal, Bass Pro, Amazon. And. And so, there's always a challenge when you're talking about industrial parks or. We don't want people living there, well, but that was the old approach. Because if you want great restaurants down there and you want. And $20 an hour jobs, you've got to have some.
And $20 an hour jobs, you've got to have some life down there. And so this is a project we actually. Next to light industrial and data centers in. For professionals. And they're getting $2 a square foot for those apartments. That's a thousand square foot apartment. Well, if you want to attract the best and the brightest and have manufacturing, research jobs down there also. Have, you could have a, next slide, please. You could have housing done in a way that you're not eating up that much land, but you're. Higher value for the remaining commercial research, light industrial that's. Higher paying jobs. So your net tax base and your tax revenue is going to be much more significant, even though it's. And this also implicates the larger issue of housing. Why do you want housing in Rossford? You've got to be careful. Neighborhoods. But so we put in there some suggestions on infill type and adaptive reuse. Some really careful, sensitive infill strategies so that you can have a range of housing for. Others that are well-employed, you know, and they want their kids to walk to your, by the way, just beautiful, the new elementary school and, you know. You haven't seen the STEM facility yet, but and then it's just amazing what you're doing from the school side. Please. And then we were like, okay, so what if. Bass Pro, and we didn't realize this is some of the stuff that had been talked to before the crash of 2008. What if. We're not doing resorts. We do those somewhere else. It's not a resort place. We thought, what if we have, expand their ponds. Aqua, sports, people, you know, buy or rent paddle boards and canoes and that sort of thing. Being extended stay, maybe some boutique hotels, which are not in competition to the hotels that are just to the north. Those, it's a. So that you've got researchers that might fly in or senior project managers and they want, they want an apartment. And then we didn't realize we're talking about junior ranger, I'm sure indoor gun club, executive. You could have, you could have conservation, a conservation. You know, which is built on Johnny Morris's deal. And you could have higher end retail and restaurants, because now it's. Types of retail and restaurants taking advantage of Bass Pro are, and oh, by the way. It takes advantage where Amazon's headed, and this is back to my. Second career, now it's the end of my third career, but with the, with the clean fuels. So. Kenworth, who is a new corporate citizen, a fifth big, they've already started a joint venture. Right now is being reformed for natural gas. Ohio's the fifth largest producer of natural gas in the United. Left, you know what? We are carbon, but through carbon capture, we can. Part of our clean fuel strategy. You know, so Amazon and Kenworth, why don't you. Or up in the Innovation Center or both. Research and manufacturing of fuel cell. Which they're going to do and they're now, you know, almost as big as you. Fleet, you know, they don't even use them anymore. And then they become, they become a manufacturer. Which is perfect for the Crossroads Innovation Center of fuels, the fuel cell platform. And then you have jobs that are $20 an hour to jobs that are. And more down here. And then through the amenitization and using the drain, next. Bipartisan, I'm not being political, but who are these guys? Where was the bipartisan year bill announced? Right here, you know, in Ohio, Senator Port. Mars One Captor, the, and I'm assuming that the new senator-elect. Your governor, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but you want to trade, you can have Governor Abbott and I'll take. To wine is all about clean energy and economic development. And I mean that tongue in cheek, but not really. I mean. Bipartisan view of the world. And there's money that's already been authorized. And as far as I'm concerned, you may be, Rossford may be the most attractive place in the country. Two major infrastructure bills, the climate, clean energy bill. To pay for all this connected infrastructure and the watershed and clean. With Department of Energy for clean EVs and heavy-duty traffic. Watershed design strategies. I mean, it, the, it's endless and linking all of that together is. To Washington and Seattle and Tokyo and Western Nebraska. Your staff as a guide and to you from, from a policy standpoint. Implementation side to, and working with Rex and the county. To make the case that Rossford and the Port Authority deserve. Air to implement this vision. That then attracts more private investment and more private companies. I mean. Next slide, please. So, that's a lot. I want you all to know that this is, to name it as. It's not really a business plan. It's not really a vision book. It's not really an infrastructure strategy. It's not really a calling card. For investment jobs. It's not, it's all of that. And will some of the details unfold differently than. But the only limitation as far as I'm concerned for this. Your own decision to limit yourselves. That's it. I really believe that, because you already have it. Out in the way for a little bit to help kind of pull it together. And then now we're going to get out of the way. After. We're happy to answer any questions. It's, this is the end of my, I'm going to start writing a book. It was a pleasure working for you, but I'm done working for mayors and developers. So this is the last. They don't have the money to do that. But, but it's an exciting time. United States globally, you know, and you all should pat yourselves on the back because. And that's why we use the term Renaissance of really an industrial core base. I mean, I mean that in a patriotic sense. You should be proud. And to be a community of only 7,000. Things for the local residents that don't care about a particular job or a company, whatever, you have the opportunity. Any company town that says it's not just about the job. It's not just about the company coming and. Unity benefiting from the amenities that Mick described. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions. I apologize. We did put adopted with a date on it. It's not adopted. We've got some typos that we've got to clean up. From, from David and Roger in the press, but. That was being presumptive. It's just, we wanted to, we, we. You know, but we, we hope that you see this as a complete. Document. And if you start pulling things out and doing, you know, unless there's something fundamental, we hope that we can. There can be some corrections and modifications, or there may be some additions, but we'd really like to. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. City Council, does anybody have any comments or questions for Scott or Mayor? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say to Scott, Mick and Pogomire, from being there from the beginning. The world has changed. Rossford has changed. A lot of things have happened and I wanted to thank you for. Patience with us and our partnership that we've built over the last four years. So thank you very much.
Jeff, come on up and state your name and address for the record.
Seven, I appreciate you guys finally showing up after a lengthy period of time. Is, have you already spoken to NSG? Be on board with it, or is this a dream? Because they've already, they've already started expanding in Woodtown. It's out of here. The need will come. They'll need the property down there for things that are progressing out. Something like that. So are they on board? Have you spoken to them? Are they willing to put the money into?
Spoken to them directly about this vision, but we are not, we will want them. All to validate it first. We are not asking them to shut down. We're asking them to take advantage of what they're. Continue their operations there, which this is consistent with. We haven't talked to anybody about money. Significant federal dollars that would be available for this. And I think the commercialization opportunities would be. Research on their midterm 2022 to 2024 plan globally. Rossford is at the top of their. Terms of their presence here. And so we did extensive due diligence and. So to be honest with you, we took a little bit of a risk that we would put a vision, it's a vision there. That's a. To candidly, I mean, this is not a traditional way to do it, but to. These guys, Rossford, have figured out how we can stay here, expand in the county. Operations locally and globally and really advance what there are. The answer is no, we haven't, but we have generally talked to them about how can we. Down the facility and still take downtown Rossford in partnership with the. I'm just being very straightforward. It's a straightforward question, deserves a straightforward answer. And I believe that.
Rex and I are in constant contact with the leadership of NSG here in North America.
And we talked to the mayor and Rex and to Todd and Allison about this all the way along. Conversations have been, but there have been conversations that we're doing nothing to put at risk the operations. And whatever that might be. Yeah, we're. Suggestion of how they might want to evolve.
Yeah, we're, I mean, not only are we talking about the future. We're working with them weekly on the 125-year anniversary of the city of Rossford, so. In the loop. Mr. Marquette.
So, since it's been a while, we, the city hired you. Plan, correct? And this is the plan. So you, you've fulfilled your obligation. Of which you were hired.
I believe so. I mean, we, we have a memo that we did. But you all have done a lot of the updating on that and I understand that you've got some other things. And with the DORA and you've done some rezoning already. So that's sort of been. We, we'll be providing that. It's more of a technical document that's. Subject to Allison and Todd saying otherwise. I believe that this completes our work.
Reaching, but going, listening to the presentation and looking at what we got here. This plan is based on acquiring property or getting people to give.
Not, nothing. It's, no, this is Bass Pro. This is your property. Here's a suggestion. Scannell, here's your property. Here's a suggestion. Building on your schools, your assets. Absolutely not. There needs to be no assemblage or acquisition of property to execute this plan.
Getting that property to the plan.
Well, to their own self-interest. It's also in the public interest. Yeah.
So the plan itself is a plan for the city, but also a, a subplan for that business or that.
A long history individually and together of either representing municipality, but also stepping in the shoes of. Stakeholders and the community, or representing a developer and stepping in the shoes of the public interest. Because when. Have forged yourself in the rigor of saying, is it going to work? And that's what we've done here. It's non-traditional. Planning industry is really never, as a whole, taking responsibility for. And you're going to grow your tax base? You're going to be more attractive for public monies at this. And this is going to lead to more profitability for your corporate citizens and more jobs. And since you. The job, you know, win, 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 win. I think it's a great question. I'm glad you asked that because the plan. Sure. I don't know if you want to respond to that, but I, I hope that answers your question.
Okay, anyone else on council? Thank you so much, you guys. Committee reports.
I'll read it. Finance and. November 28th and December 7th. Ruse, Marquette and Heben were present. I was excused on the November 28th meeting. We reviewed the. The wish lists, if you will, for each department. We went through, you know, detailed. Debate. Committee questioned why Glenwood Road Ditch enclosure wasn't. The school traffic. Administration indicated that the school district has been approached for consideration to have. Orange Tiff. Bruce did not approve of the Ford Memorial redesign. requested funding for improvements of Vets Park to be considered before the 125th anniversary celebration. That the city would do something. The 2022 budget was 17.59 million and came. Mills. 2023 budget is 19 million. I motioned to Mr. Marquette seconded to approve the. Legislation update for tonight's meeting, annual appropriation ordinances and year-end cleanup. Committee recommends passages of all of those annual. What is that indignant defendants? Committee recommends passage. New finance director salary ordinance committee recommends passage. ODOT 206,023 dollars and 70 cents for the hunger development roadway work this. Well, years ago, that hunger paid the city for, but ODOT is just invoicing for. Committee recommends. That is it, Mr. Mayor.
Any comments or questions on the finance report? Any correspondence?
Report from you or Allison?
Yeah, I was just going to get correspondence out of the way. All a copy of this. The only correspondence was a letter from Columbia Gas indicating that. CO to request a rate increase for infrastructure replacement program rider. Approximately $2.04 per month. This is subject to. We're not required to take any action, but they want you to know that if you want to view their pre-filing notice. The letter indicates a website that you can go to to review it. That was it. Thank you so much. And I, at this time, would like to introduce you to Chris Kirk. Chris, you want to? Anyways, Chris has been in Northwest Ohio. And has been in the public finance.
And has been in the, uh, public finance industry most of that. Finance director for Tarda. And previously he was with Allison and. He's served on multiple boards. He's very familiar with Wood County and Rex Hoffman and. I would like to ask council to approve his appointment to be our next finance director. Any questions for Chris? Okay.
Mayor's.
Appointment.
We do move, yes?
Do not need a motion.
We're still going to take a vote.
Yes.
Even. It's not a motion, so. Vote on accepting the mayor's appointment of Chris Kirk as the finance director.
Aye.
Obidorf.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
And welcome. Thank you so much.
Chris, real quick, why don't you introduce?
Greg Marquette.
Hi, Carolyn.
Welcome, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome to Rosford. All right, introduction of ordinances. Twenty-two dash sixty-seven by title only.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to table ordinance 2022 dash sixty-seven.
Vote on the motion to table ordinance 2022 dash sixty-seventh. Indefinitely.
Definitely.
Vote on the motion, Heben.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Obidorf.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Is there? Twenty-two dash sixty-nine by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-two dash sixty-nine is an ordinance approving. For the year beginning January 1, 2023 and ending December 31, 2020.
Allison.
Yeah, we'd like you to pass this tonight. Finance committee has already approved it and recommended its. Comes in just over 19 million dollars.
Move suspension of the third reading.
Second.
With us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
Suspending with the third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vote on the motion to adopt 2022 dash sixty-nine. Echol.
Aye.
Obidorf. Reynolds.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance? Zero by title only.
So moved. Second.
Only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-two. Is declaring the improvement of certain parcels of real property to be a public purpose to. From real property taxation, designating specific public infrastructure improvements that. Really benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual. Establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, providing. To Ohio revised code sections 570940B, 5709. 70943, 570982, 570983. Eighty-five and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Kevin.
Yes, so this. Sort of takes the place of the ordinance that you tabled. This is a TIF ordinance. As you know, we're working with. Todd about the school contributing a portion of the money for the infrastructure. They have not been able. Get that done yet. We've met with them and they're on board and everything. This is a TIF. If we don't pass a TIF ordinance by. Of the increase in value of the Scannell property because it reverts back to January 1, when it started as a farmland. On there, so we needed to get this on the agenda today. Procedurally, the school had to receive a four. So it's good news. The bad news is we're going to need to have a second reading of this before. And it has to be after December. After December 22nd. It should be. There's been some suggestion that your mother would cook some paragies if we had it.
Eat, so she just found out.
That was mayor's suggestion. So. Reading, but also council considers setting a second meeting now for December. Today, I, we just need to have five people there for literally five minutes.
Do you guys? Christmas Eve and Christmas are probably out. Want to try the twenty.
With the.
Yes, that's already been suspended.
Okay. I say we do it on the 20. I agree.
Okay.
It's a Thursday.
Thursday.
What time do you want to do it?
We don't need a step.
Y'all will be in a really good mood.
You need me here.
We do. And arrest. What, what time is your party?
We can be back by 4:30.
No, I, when, when you do it before?
I, I can.
You said it's going to take five minutes.
Five minutes.
I can, one o'clock.
I won't need five, so.
Can you, Bob?
I can.
We could do it later on.
Well, one o'clock.
Six o'clock, normal time.
That's fine, whatever council decides.
Does that work for everybody? That's just what it's good.
Yeah, if we could have a motion and then just council approving that.
It's going to be a special meeting.
Correct.
For this one.
So motion to have a special council meeting on December 22nd at 6:00.
I'll have it in there.
Second.
All those in favor of having a special. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, council. So this just gets a first reading.
Twenty-two dash seventy-one by title only.
Second.
By title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-two dash seventy-one is an ordinance. The annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January 1, 2022 and. Two passed by ordinance 2021 dash seventy-eight. This is a first reading.
Allison.
Do or pay or want to pay anything that we haven't put in the budget to begin with. We need to do a supplemental. This is a. Thousand four hundred and twenty dollars to pay the rec center employees because we came up short for December for. Know when the ODOT bill would come in for Mr. Hunger's road down there. He had already paid the city that. And so we've had it the whole time and we didn't know when it would come in, so we didn't appropriate that money in the budget. So we need to move that over in order to pay that as well.
Mr. Heben.
Move to.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
They do not their appropriations.
Uh, move to adopt ordinance 2022 dash seventy-one.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Heben.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Obidorf.
Aye.
Echol. I'm sorry, Marquette.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022 dash seventy?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please. Twenty-two dash seventy-two is an ordinance for transfer of appropriation. Items to other line items and other line items to personal line items, thereby amending. For the year beginning January 1, 2022 and ending December 31, 2022, passed. Seventy-eight. First reading.
Allison.
Yeah, this is a housekeeping one. We do it every year. Move within the lines. You just can't move from different fund to fund. We do it every year in order to clean up for the end of the year.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
Second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, motion to adopt ordinance 2022.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Heben.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022 dash?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only. Twenty-two dash seventy-three is an ordinance for transfer of funds and. Measure for the year beginning January 1, 2023 and ending December 31, 2020.
Allison.
This is where we transfer the money from the general fund into the individual, like the capital fund. And fund. Again, this is a housekeeping item. We do it every year and these will be the transfers of funds for the budget of.
Yeah, move to suspend the second and third reading of 2022 seventy-three.
Second.
Is anyone? Passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
Although. Third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Ordinance 2022 dash seventy-three. Obidorf.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Heben. Echol.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022 dash seventy?
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-two dash seventy-four is an ordinance establishing the compensation for the finance. Wood County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Does anyone have any comments or? Question for the finance director we just appointed?
Well, this is compensation.
A year. We have a, a scale from 84 to 104 for that position.
Move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Anyone in the? In regard to us passing this this evening? No. Chris can. First and then decide later for.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Seventy-four, an emergency measure.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 20.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Heben.
Ah.
Marquette.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022 dash seventy-five by title only?
So moved.
Those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seventy-five is an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Public Defenders Commission of Wood County. Indict defendants in ordinance-only cases filed by the city of Rosford. First reading.
Move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with? Questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt ordinance 2022 dash seventy-five.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Heben.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Obidorf.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022 dash seventy-six by title only?
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dash seventy-six is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with. Identification and risk assessment in conjunction with the awarded hazard mitigation grant. This is a first reading.
Allison.
This, we, if you remember, we got a grant for an assessment of. Somebody to complete that for us, so that's what this would do, would award that contract.
Suspension.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
An emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Of adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2022 dash. Obidorf.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Two dash seventy-seven by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-two dash seventy-seven is an ordinance amended. The annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January 1, 2022 and ending. Two, this is a first reading.
Just like we just did the one for 2023 with all the lists of everything that we. And the one that we originally did for 2022 because we're moving that money from the general fund to the rec center so that.
Who to suspend the second and third reading?
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with? Questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Seventy-seven. Obidorf.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Okay, introduction of resolutions. Is there a motion to read resolution 2022?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Twenty-two dash twenty-two. A resolution to approve the mayor's appointment of. Mission and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Valerie's a pretty amazing person. Air. Her enthusiasm is fantastic and I think she'll do a great job for us.
Suspension of the second and third readings.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us? Or any questions in regards to it?
Nope.
All those in favor, suspend. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Declare an emergency.
Second.
Emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
On the motion to adopt resolution 2022 dash twenty-two. Echol.
Aye.
Obidorf.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Council remarks, Mr. Toth.
For coming tonight. With your presentation. Welcome, Mr. Kirk. Everybody, happy holidays.
Mr. Obidorf.
Again, thank you for your presentation. Fantastic work. No doubt about it. Welcome on board and we'll see you on the 22nd for our special meeting. Thank you.
Allison.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you for your presentation. Looks like you put a lot of thought into it and researching the history and stuff. Some neat ideas. Outside the box. I, I didn't know what I expected, but no. Welcome to the team. Are you a Buckeye fan?
Sure, yeah.
Awesome. I thought I saw, I saw. Between the Michigan fans and the Buckeyes and. This side of the room is. Well, Alex. Chris is in hostile territory right now. Welcome. Not happy about the 22nd.
It's, it is tied on that. We were trying to get the.
I didn't have to be here.
Sorry.
So I'll save Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. Marquette.
I'm nothing, thank you.
Mr. Heben.
I already thanked you guys. I wanted to just mention real quick, last week, the University of Toledo women's basketball. Team ranked in the country, Michigan Marines, by three points and our hometown. Four points of the game. She's just doing awesome and what great representation of the. She's a superstar here, so congratulations.
Amen. She's, she's amazing.
Thank you both for the presentation. Welcome, Chris, and happy holidays.
All right. Go ahead, Jeff.
Sure. Couple things. Uh, what's proposed at the property at the Northeast? There's a zoning variance change sign there. What's, what's being proposed for that property? Northeast Buck and, uh, Glenwood?
Yeah, um, so it's basically to, to clean. Designation, it's going to go to planned industrial. So it's going for planned, planned commercial.
Zoning for?
Six uses in planned industrial, it's actually more, more flexible than planned commercial. Scott was talking about with, with our zoning.
Oh, okay. Was that part of the, part of what you brought? Or was that, or was that acreage on the other side?
Yeah. Okay. So, yeah, the one. That's why I got confused. There, there was a bunch of orphan parcels that were along and I said. All, all the changes we're doing now on cleanup.
Okay, so there's, there's no construction. The other, the other question is, Mr. Heben, in regards to your, um, meeting notes. Ford Memorial. A lot of work was put in by the Rosford Visitors and Convention Bureau. Are those donations now gone and we're having to put this to? Instruction and put it out for bid and will it be done by the 125th?
I have no idea. The, um, donations are not gone. They're still. I was on the phone with Tony Knight, uh, actually before the council meeting. So.
Yeah, are they still involved or have they stepped away?
No, they're still involved. They're still the Rosford Visitors Convention Bureau.